Cancel them, they'd pop back up again, sometimes multiplying.
This kept going back and forth for two, three years. There was a point in time I had ten accounts. I've had more than ten accounts at Wells Fargo. I only need one.
City Attorney Mike Fuer says these weren't honest mistakes, but a scam by bank workers to reach sales goals. Fuer's office is now suing Wells Fargo for up to $2,500 per violation. He's also warning people to check their bank statements often, for new unauthorized accounts and other unwanted activity. Has a line of credit that they didn't ask for been opened in their name? Have accounts that they have closed remained open? Have they received debit or credit cards they didn't ask for? Have they incurred charges on any of these accounts? Wells Fargo blames a few bad apples who've either been fired or disciplined. But City Attorney Fuer says the bank has failed to notify all affected customers of the scam. That's the law, he says, and has also failed to refund all the stolen money. Wells Fargo denies this. Frank Ahn, a Korean-American, is worried about customers like his parents, who don't have command of the English language. Customers who could fall prey to slick-talking salespeople with fees adding up.
Your parents could have accounts out there that they don't know about, getting $15 charges ruining their credit.
Meantime, the L.A. City Attorney's Office has set up a special hotline, urging any and all victims and potential victims to call and help them with their case. That number at the bottom of your screen, 213-978-3393. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Wells Fargo is one of the nation's Big Four banks, which include J.P. Morgan Chase, Bank of America, and Citigroup. L.A.'s small-business restaurant owners have banded together to show a united front over the plan to increase the minimum wage. They're saying yes to a wage increase, but not for every worker. Anna Marcos explains.
Apprehension is brewing in L.A.'s restaurant industry as talk of a minimum wage increase gathers steam. Mayor Eric Garcetti favors a minimum wage increase for all workers to $15 an hour in the next five years. But a coalition of restaurant owners say they would support the measure if the city uses the total compensation idea, that it raised the minimum wage only for back-of-the-house workers in restaurants who don't receive tips and keep wages the same for servers and bartenders who can make from $25 to $50 an hour in tips.
I, like many of them, are all for raising the minimum wage, but it cannot happen without counting tips. I believe from the bottom of my heart that the consequences will be catastrophic for all of the restaurants in the city of Los Angeles if this happens.
Even some servers say using the total compensation idea is the only fair way to raise wages.
I know that I get $25 to $35 an hour in tips, across averaged out. That's just tips alone, plus I get $10 an hour minimum wage.
Small restaurant owners say they run one of the most labor-intensive industries with a small profit margin of 8% to 12%, sometimes even 0% profit during slow months, and that it doesn't leave much room for a massive wage increase.
The tight margins in our businesses paralleled with a proposed increase create a very high likelihood of shutting down independent restaurants and creating significant job losses.
But according to Mayor Eric Garcetti, top economists claim a minimum wage increase would rev up L.A.'s economy.
He told us that the impact of raising the wage would be more jobs, more economic activity, and lifting, you know, as many as a million people in this town out of poverty. That was a very clear path forward.
Whether there is room for compromise or not, one thing Mayor Garcetti seems firm on is there will be a minimum wage increase plan by the end of the year. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Restaurant owners plan to fund an independent study on the minimum wage increase and its impact on the restaurant industry. Well, just who will replace termed-out Councilman Tom LaBange on the L.A. City Council? It's now down to two candidates who'll face off in a runoff next week. Gil Reyes is at the L.A. City Clerk's office with more. Gil?
That's right, Yana. We are here at election headquarters in downtown where the countdown is on to Tuesday, May 19th. The main event, of course, will be the L.A. City Council race to determine who will replace outgoing L.A. City Councilman Tom LaBange, who represents Griffith Park and surrounding areas. There will be three L.A. School Board races, too, and workers here are getting the word out. The blitz is on. Ads like this in 12 different languages urging Angelenos to head to the polls.
The division has attended community events, reached out to community press, and used print ads, social media, and other outreach materials to increase voter awareness.
Up for grabs, the L.A. City Council seat, soon to be vacated by 14-year Councilman Tom LaBange, who's facing term limits. His former chief of staff, Carolyn Ramsey, taking on Community Health Director David Rue in a runoff. Both want jurisdiction over parts of Sherman Oaks, the Miracle Mile, Los Feliz, and surrounding areas. This is the first of four runoff contests.
There are a total of eight candidates on the ballot.
Also at stake, seats on the L.A. School Board. It's Scott Schmerlelson versus incumbent Tamar Gallitzen in District 3, incumbent Bennett Kaiser taking on Ref Rodriguez in District 5, also Lydia Gutierrez challenging incumbent Richard Vladovic in District 7. During the last city elections in March, just 9% of registered voters cast ballots. The Election Reform Commission was recently denied more funding for outreach, but says it's doing its best with the 11 additional outreach workers hired for the season to get the word out at high schools and community events. Once again, Election Day is Tuesday, May 19th. Polls open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 8:00 p.m. In downtown L.A., Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week. Yana, back to you.
Gil, thanks. And a reminder that we'll be following and reporting the latest election results right here on Channel 35 that evening. Turning now to clean streets, which are playing a big role in Mayor Eric Garcetti's back-to-basics policy. And now, a Clean Streets Initiative is about to sweep through every street in the city. Anna Marcos reports.
Sanitation strike teams have invaded this alley in South L.A. It's the first battle in a renewed fight to clean up our streets. The mayor has signed the Clean Streets Initiative, an effort that will send sanitation strike teams and five full-time clean inspectors out into every street in L.A.
We're gonna rate each street, block by block, for cleanliness.
Fixing quality-of-life issues like garbage-filled streets and alleys are a cornerstone of the mayor's back-to-basics budgeting policy for 2015.
We wanna make sure that we don't have any child that has to dodge abandoned couches on the way to school. We don't want tourists to see litter on the sidewalk when they come to Los Angeles. We don't want residents on a hot summer day to have to keep their windows closed because the trash stinks so much right outside their window.
But even a clean street or alley won't stay clean without something to put the trash in. These containers will take 2,000 tons of trash off the streets each year. There will be 5,000 of these placed on L.A. streets as part of the initiative.
We have to clean our streets. And it's for tourism, it's for business, climate, but most fundamentally, it's for the community.
Trash-filled streets have become a citywide problem, much of it due to illegal dumping.
In my district, we have one of the highest concentrations of alleys in the city. And over the years, the vast majority have fallen into disrepair, becoming dumping grounds for all kinds of trash, from hyperdronic needles to toxic waste.
City leaders had some words for would-be illegal dumpers.
To all of those knuckleheads out there who continue to trash our alleys and who think they can continue to trash our neighborhoods, our message today is you are on notice. We are coming after you.
A little more raking and cleaning in this alley, which earlier had 13 tons of trash, has now been raided clean. But with 70,000 streetblocks, city leaders say they will need volunteers and 311 callers to help report dumping. They plan to launch a campaign to recruit clean-street volunteers. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
Fines for illegal dumping can go as high as $1,000, and city leaders say they will crack down hard. A new housing complex in L.A. is giving some female veterans of the U.S. Armed Forces a place to call home. Gil Reyes reports from Move-In Day at San Pedro's Blue Butterfly Village.
Okay, let's go see what we can move in here.
Navy veteran Nicole Weaver and her kids can't wait to move into their new home.
Yes, I saw the inside, and my little girl was like, "This is awesome, mommy." So, I really... I'm just speechless. I'm really overwhelmed right now, and I just can't believe, like, all of this is happening for us.
The Weavers are among the first tenants of the newly-opened Blue Butterfly Village in San Pedro. Over 70 units of affordable housing specifically for female veterans threatened by homelessness.
Los Angeles County has the largest population of homeless veterans in the country, so we must take the lead in providing new housing opportunities for veterans.
Studies show women in the military could be more impacted by post-traumatic stress disorder and divorce than their male counterparts. They're also the fastest-growing homeless population. Over 70% of homeless women veterans don't stay in overnight shelters.
These figures horrify me, and they should horrify you as well. These women who served our country return to the grim reality of sleeping under bridges, along the river, on a bench, or in the backseat of a car.
But not the Weavers and their new neighbors. 30% of their income goes toward renting these two-story townhomes built with the help of Home Depot stores and Habitat for Humanity volunteers. The nine-acre site formerly owned by the U.S. Navy has drought-tolerant gardens, also a playground with one of the coolest treehouses you'll ever see.
I feel so blessed. There you go. I feel incredibly blessed.
Part of Mayor Garcetti's push to end veteran homelessness in L.A. by the end of the year. In San Pedro, Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
The village also has mental health treatment, childcare, and job placement services on-site. Now, wasted water may have been gushing down the hills, but residents and city leaders have stopped one example of massive water waste in its tracks. Anna Marcos has more on a new policy by the L.A. Department of Water and Power.
A time of drought is not a good time to be wasting water. Yet, that's exactly what the city of L.A. found out it was doing when Eagle Rock residents called to complain. They had watched the L.A. Department of Water and Power release 70,000 gallons of water and let it escape into storm drains and into the ocean as it worked on a corroded pipe. That's when Councilmember Jose Wezar went into action.
In response to this, my office got calls. We got tagged on social media. We immediately called DWP to see what can be done. The DWP responded, send out some trucks to capture some of that water. Before the drought, it was standard to empty out pipes when you need to do routine maintenance. That simply does not make sense anymore.
Wezar asked the DWP to find alternatives to letting water drain into the ocean when pipes and reservoirs are getting work done. As a result, the DWP's new policies include collecting the drained water and using it in local parks, or draining the water into sewers so it can be recycled for irrigation and industrial purposes. The department will also start using more remote-operated underwater equipment, so fewer pipes need to be drained.
What we do with that water is really up to us. And so today, we're making a decision to do something different with the water than what we've done in the past, and that's to put it to the highest beneficial use we can. We believe that it'll save millions of gallons of water a year.
And so, thanks to the joint effort by residents, Councilmember Wezar, and the DWP, L.A. has become more water-smart than ever before as it continues to weather this historic drought. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
According to an independent study, L.A. has very low levels of water waste compared to other cities. For example, its water-waste index is less than half of Santa Monica's. It's a new campaign to get Angelino employees more fit and healthy, even at their work desks. Anna Marcos takes a look at the local Get Fit, Don't Sit campaign, a joint effort by city leaders and the American Diabetes Association.
Councilmember Mitch O'Farrell gets in a little dance and fitness action on the City Hall lawn before heading up to work at council chambers.
I feel energized and wide awake.
Both O'Farrell and Councilmember Herb Wesson have teamed up with the American Diabetes Association to promote Get Fit, Don't Sit Day, a wake-up call for workers to get off their chairs and start exercising to avoid a host of health problems from diabetes to heart disease and weight gain.
The cost of this is extremely, extremely expensive. It affects the bottom line of companies. It affects the bottom line of paychecks that we take home every day.
Sitting is the new smoking, because it has risks. When your body is at rest for long periods of time, unless you're actually sleeping, it can cause risks to your health in terms of circulation.
Even if you can't full-on boogie down at work, there are still plenty of exercises at your desk that you can do, whether sitting down or standing up, with or without weights. In this case, I'm using Coke bottles. You can use water bottles. The experts recommend you take a break every one and a half hours for a few minutes to do a few reps.
We asked some of our Channel 35 crew to get moving. Our editor Andrew thought he'd take it easy, doing the same exercise I did, sitting down.
There's no reason for you not to be active. You can move wherever you are, any time of the day.
Our traffic coordinator Marlene took a break with a little seated jogging action, while our traffic support guy Joe took a more active approach to his jogging routine. Tricep dips and lunges helped our social media guy Jack get his fitness groove on, and some found extra motivation touching their toes with a group involved. The message is, no matter who you are, whether you squat or not, desk exercise breaks can help keep you fit and healthy for years to come. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. This Week.
87 L.A. companies have now signed on to be part of the Get Fit, Don't Sit program. While small businesses and job creation are on the rise in Los Angeles, City Attorney Mike Fuer taps into local neighborhoods with the help of a new social network app, and Councilmember Paul Krikorian wants the traffic app Waze to put the brakes on cut-through traffic. These stories in City Beat. Los Angeles Mayor Eric Garcetti spoke at a small-business reception at City Hall recently, saying the city is making great strides in job growth, adding 70,000 new jobs in nearly two years, and 50,000 businesses also incorporated within that same time period. And with his back-to-basics agenda, the mayor said he wants small businesses to know that City Hall is there to help.
We wanna know what we can do better at City Hall. What you need from City Hall. Where aren't we lending a hand? And where are we getting still in the way of your progress? Because we're gonna fix it. We're gonna change it. We've already seen how much we can accomplish in 22 months. Imagine what we can do, hopefully, in eight years or more together.
A group of small-business owners also took the opportunity to talk about their own experiences and give some advice to students from Dorsey High School. City Attorney Mike Fuer recently announced a new collaboration with the private social network site Nextdoor.com. The site allows users to connect with other residents in their neighborhoods. Fuer said there are 22 neighborhood prosecutors now in place, up from eight, who will work and communicate even more effectively with L.A. residents to make neighborhoods stronger and safer. The neighborhood prosecutors will use Nextdoor to communicate with residents about various initiatives, and residents will be able to alert them about community issues. And from neighborhoods to neighborhood traffic, Councilmember Paul Krikorian wants to expand on another city partnership, which was recently announced by the mayor, this one with a smartphone traffic app called Waze. The app helps drivers get to where they need to go by rerouting motorists away from busy boulevards and avenues and onto side streets. But Krikorian wants Waze to take steps to reduce cut-through traffic in residential areas, saying that small neighborhood streets aren't designed to accommodate the volume, speed, and increased congestion of cut-through traffic. The L.A. Zoo finally has a name for its Western Grey baby kangaroo. This cute little kangaroo will now be known as Winnie the Rue, a name that was chosen from more than 500 entries submitted by the general public as part of the zoo's Name Our Rue contest. The zoo launched the social media campaign on Twitter, offering folks a rare opportunity to name the zoo animal. And after 5,082 votes and more than 12,000 visits to the L.A. Zoo's Name Our Rue contest webpage, the zoo picked the winner. They tweeted an adorable clip of the cutie pie, writing, "And the winning name of our baby kangaroo is Winnie the Rue." And it was certainly not an easy choice. The zoo tweeted the adorable names of the top five finalists, writing, "After over 5,000 votes, excited to announce the name of our Rue finalists: Ariel, Penelope, Winnie the Rue, Keanu, and Kip." The name of the winning entry was conceived by Patricia Beauchamp of Los Angeles. In addition to bragging rights, she'll also receive a GoPro Hero 4 camera and a family deluxe membership to the zoo. Two runners-up, Cody Grindal, who submitted Penelope, and Delia G., who proposed Keanu, will also receive family memberships. And that's our This Week in Tweets. A Spanish book fair returns, an archaeological dig, and a heated race to the finish line. All this in this week's Things to Do.
Angels do read, and when they read, their dreams come true.
After a one-year hiatus, Lea-L.A., the Spanish-language book fair, is back in Los Angeles. Come with your family to the convention center Friday, May 15 through Sunday, May 17, and enjoy a variety of fun and educational activities. The weekend will feature forums, book signings, cultural activities, children workshops, conferences, and plenty of books to read in Spanish. Admission is free. For more information, just visit lea-la.com. Your kids will dig this weekend's event over at the Skirball Center on Saturday, May 16 and Sunday, May 17. Children of all ages can get their hands dirty during Dig It, an archaeological dig at the Skirball Center. Kids will get a chance to slip on an archaeologist's vest, sift and sort through sand to find hidden ancient artifacts. The program is included with museum admission, and no reservation is required. Dig It takes place on Saturdays and Sundays, except May 24. The Skirball Cultural Center is located at 2701 North Sepulveda Boulevard in Los Angeles. For the special summer schedule, visit skirball.com/programs. And if you're looking for some fun and adventure, spend an unforgettable day on a uniquely awesome journey that will have you discovering new places, solving challenging clues, and meeting new people. Race L.A. will get your heart racing as teams of two make their way to locations around the L.A. area, some famous and some little-known, performing challenges and solving clues that lead to their next destinations, all while racing against other teams in a heated competition to reach the finish line first. Inspired by TV's The Amazing Race, Race L.A. takes you on a round-the-world adventure right here in L.A. In each race, players make their way to many cultural, historical, natural, and entertainment-related attractions, from hidden Hollywood secrets, spectacular architectural treasures, tranquil parks, to gardens and urban shopping areas. The action begins on Saturday, May 16 at 8:00 a.m. in Pershing Square, located at 532 South Olive Street. Tickets are $115 per person or $230 per team. For more information, visit racel.com. And that's a look at some things to do.
And finally tonight, the LAPD fired up the grill and served some tasty hot dogs with all the fixins in an effort to engage the local community. An LAPD martial arts team shows off some impressive moves during a recent community cookout at the Toblerone Recreation Center in Los Angeles. The cookout was hosted by the LAPD's Rampart Division. The purpose: to enhance the relationship between police officers and the youth in the community, and show what programs are available for the kids to help them stay busy after school. One young man who's been training in martial arts for a year said the sport is good for kids.
It's important so kids could know how to defend themselves in case of emergency, learn how to be disciplined, respectful to teachers, to their parents, to others.
The martial arts team went through a series of demonstrations showing their skills of strength and power. LAPD cadets were also on hand, passing out flyers and talking to kids about opportunities and other activities that they can participate in, especially during the summer months.
Rampart's a growing, you know, young community, and we just wanna make sure everybody feels safe.
About 200 folks came out to enjoy the festivities and good food. The cookout is a new event started this year in conjunction with the city's Summer Nightlight program. LAPD officials say they plan on holding another cookout sometime this summer. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Yana Kay. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org, and you can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
If you're in an accident, just stay. Call 911. Help if you can. You might save someone's life. Obey the rules of the law.
Don't worry Patty, this isn't gonna hurt me one bit. Hi, I'm Dr. Eric Shapiro in beautiful Encino, and you're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Open wide.
Good morning, it's May 15th. Mr. O'Farrell's here for the 13th District. Thank you very much. So I think Mr. Sadio, Mr. Fuentes, Mr. Corret, Mr. O'Farrell, Mr. Westen. City Attorney's here, thank you very much. Mr. Price is here for the new ninth. Thank you very much, Price. Thank you very much, Sergeant. Sergeant, did you check with the various detective assistants? Did Detective Sergeant O'Farrell check as well? Mr. Buscagno, welcome for the 15th, all the way up from the Port of Los Angeles and all the ships at sea. We thank you, Mr. Buscagno.
Madam Clerk, we do not, we do not have a quorum as of yet. I'm sure we will in a very few minutes, so why don't we begin with the presentation portion of today's agenda? And we will start off with Mr. Tom Labange. Mr. Labange, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I want you to join us too. I want to pronounce your name correctly.
Deanna.
Deanna.
Yes.
Mr. President, welcome our very special Deanna Veska, who's the Chief Administrative Officer for the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, but the Chief Executive Officer, Mr. Art himself, and the Wallace Annenberg Director of the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, Michael Gobain is here. Because believe it or not, it's 50 years, 50 years since the Los Angeles County Museum was opened, right there in what was known as Hancock Park, Park, not the neighborhood, right on the Miracle Mile, and they have absolutely done a miracle in their work all these 50 years. I first want to start off with remarks and just salute again. We adjourned this week a member of Chris Burton, the great artist who brought us Urban Lights. And if you can imagine, Mr. Fuentes, it now is a magnet for people from all over the city to come and enjoy the work of that artist on a street that all of you gave back to the county to create that art space. Let's remember Chris Burton for just a moment. Thank you very much. But 50 years ago, the County of Los Angeles, and we're partners with the county, I know sometimes we have a little bit of a dance with the county supervisors up the street there at the Kenneth Hahn Building, but I think it's so important that collectively, in this great state of California, which there are 58 counties, did you know that, Michael? You knew that, 50. Did you know that there, Deanna? 58 counties in California? Felipe knew that, he's a former state representative. Of the 58 counties, Los Angeles County is the largest county, and it does so many things in conjunctions with all the 88 cities and unincorporated areas, and including Southern California as well. Just recently, I know my deputy, Camila Blatch, worked closely with you on Pacific Standard Time, which is a Southern California art exhibit throughout. But we want to highlight the 50 years of which LACMA has successfully brought their doors open to the art world and the community. And my favorite thing, members, if you want to ever remember my favorite thing, is when I go to a county facility, whether it's the Arboretum, a city facility like Cabrillo Museum, or the Los Angeles Zoo City Facility, and I see a sea of yellow school buses, I feel we have accomplished something. We have brought children to the art institutions and cultural institutions and parks throughout our region. And that happens at Los Angeles County Museum of Art, but then it's also transformed. They got a hip-hop night. Do you know what hip-hop is, Felipe? You know? Okay, man, they got it. They got a jazz night, they got a, you need a little rock and roll, and you got a hot, you got Latin sounds, they got everything there. They're bringing Los Angeles to this great art community and this art world here. Michael, this salutes everything that has been done in the past and present, and I wanted to really, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, our mayor Eric Garcetti, who lives right down the street and comes by often with his children, to tell you how special it is and how thankful we are, and I want to call on you as I present this to you, to inform the council members and our very special guests, what this transformation has done in bringing art to the people, and all the nights that you have, and the old Hollywood movie nights, old LA movie nights, it's just a very special place to be, and we're so happy and looking forward for the next 50 years. Michael Gobain, please, for remarks, the Los Angeles County Museum of Art, LACMA 50th Anniversary.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Tom. Tom, you've been a stalwart supporter of the arts and culture in Los Angeles. Thank you, council members, for all you do for Los Angeles. In fact, as Tom said, what was Ogden Drive that you generously gave to the public of Los Angeles has become really the centerpiece of Los Angeles. Urban Light, Chris Burden Sculpture, which is lit all night long, attracts people of all places, all economic strata, all ethnicities, to what is a town square. And Chris Burden, when he, when he made his speech, he finished it and he said to me, "I should have said what I really meant was that I wanted to bring the miracle back to Miracle Mile when Urban Light was lit." And that has become the plaza, the center of Los Angeles. You probably know, our programs and our collections cover the world. Doesn't matter where you come from, what your ethnicity, you can find something of yourself at LACMA. And that's the point of LACMA, to be something for everyone. LA is being increasingly recognized as the creative capital of the world, not just film, but design, and of course, art. Art has been, artists have flocked to Los Angeles from everywhere, and so we are trying to create that community center. We also have probably the largest in-school education program of any museum in America, and we are firmly committed to that educational mission that is our core mission, which is to educate the public and create space and art for, for all of the public from wherever they come. And so we appreciate all the support you've given us. We are building a new facility to replace our aging facilities, and the city, you've already reached out to the possibility of us bridging Wilshire Boulevard, and really making this a county-city collaboration, and engaging the public even further. So we thank you deeply for your support. We will deliver in the next 50 years even more. We've doubled our attendance once, we hope to double it again, and to reach even more of the public with our services and education. So thank you.
Michael, thank you. And the purple line is coming out, the subway is coming out.
Subway's coming up.
I wanted to say that when I was appointed by then-Mayor Hahn to the MTA Board, we were able to put that back on track. Thank you, Henry Waxman, thank you Mayor Vera Rigoza, especially thank you, Mr. Garcetti, right now a full steam ahead on that, and the work of Mark Ridley-Thomas and the work of Zeb Yaroslavsky, now Sheila Kuehl. It's a partnership with the County of Los Angeles, and I'm so proud to be there for you, and I'll have a little more time to check it out. It's my county line, Mr. Fuentes. It is my county line when I go out to LACMA. So on behalf of all of us, we salute you for this 50th anniversary, and in politics, I tell you, put the rose between the thorns, Mr. Gobain. We get right here, as art is, there we go, right there. Hold that up. Good job, you got it. No, no, no. Here, look here first. Look right here. Super. Did you hear, did you hear, Mr. Fuentes, this is my county line. This is where I go, right there on Ogden. Can't believe, let's hear it for LACMA, Los Angeles County Museum of Art.
Thank you, Councilman Labange. Thank you.
Again, congratulations and thank you, Mr. Labange. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingfield, Labange, Buscagno, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corret, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Westen, 10 members present a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, first, order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Sadio moves Bloomingfield seconds, next.
Committed resolutions for approval.
O'Farrell moves Corret seconds, next.
Mr. President, there's requests to continue Item 1 to June 16th.
So without objection, that'll be the order?
Items 2 and 3 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, members, Items 2 and 3, any specials? The public comment has been satisfied on Items 2 and 3, correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay, members, any specials? Let's prepare to vote on Items 2 and 3. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Let's move on to the... Let's move on to the... That voice changed. I had to look down. Okay, let's move on to, and that's, I guess, an inside joke. Let's move on to Items 4 and through 7.
Items 4 through 7 are items which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Mr. Buscaino?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ask that we continue Item 5 to May 26th.
Okay, without objection, Item 5 will be continued. You have the date, Madam Clerk?
Yes, May 26th.
Okay, do we have cards?
Cards on Items 4, 6, and 7.
Okay, so, uh, what's remaining?
Uh, nothing in that section, Mr. President.
I didn't think so. Let's move on. Okay, you know, I think we'll hold off on the special meeting, and I'll defer to, uh, Mr. Carrasca, uh, for another special presentation for today. Mr. Carrasca, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President and colleagues. Our city has an annual tradition of declaring May to be Older Americans Month. At this time, we recognize older Americans for their invaluable contributions to Los Angeles and our nation. The month was established by President John F. Kennedy in 1963, although he called it Senior Citizens Month. The name was later changed to Older Americans Month by Jimmy Carter in 1980. This year, we also celebrate the 50th anniversary of the Older Americans Act, which was signed by President Lyndon B. Johnson on July 14th, 1965. And this is the first federal initiative aimed at providing comprehensive services for older adults. The Act remains absolutely essential to our communities and people across the country and provides key nutritional and supportive in-home and community-based services, disease prevention, health promotion services, elder rights programs, the National Family Caregiver Support Program, and the Native American Caregiver Support Program. However, this Act has been under attack in recent years. We, as a city, have been affected because Congress has not reauthorized the Older Americans Act since 2011. Also, Congress created the disastrous sequester, which resulted in the cut of $1.6 million every fiscal year since 2013 from our Senior Meals Program. All hope is not lost in that regard, however, because of the leadership of the City Council's Budget and Finance Committee, led by our Chairperson, Paul Carrasca. We have, for the third year in a row, fully funded our city's Senior Meals Program. We use $1.6 million of our own funds to cover the gap. The City of Los Angeles is also very concerned about the issue of senior hunger, among other pressing issues that we face. Uh, we might not have the funds to add extra funding to the Senior Meals Program, but we won't let one senior get cut from this program as long as we can help it. Older Americans Month also gives the chance to raise awareness of the importance of community engagement as a tool for enhancing the well-being of older adults. The City of Los Angeles Council on Aging, led by President Amos Fried, engages the community in fights for the rights of seniors, not just in May, but every month of the year and on every issue. The Council on Aging, along with the Department of Aging, is planning the city's first senior summit on hunger on June 22nd. And according to recent studies and research from the Department of Aging, four in 10 seniors in Los Angeles County don't get enough food to eat. The goal of this summit is to highlight the rapidly growing issue of hunger among our older adult population. The number of seniors entering their 60s is skyrocketing. And so if we don't get a handle on this, the quality of life will greatly diminish for older Americans. I'm extremely proud of the work the Council on Aging and the Department of Aging, as well as other members of their planning committee have done. So let's give them a big round of applause. I'd also like to recognize a few other organizations that are here with us today. Jewish Family Service, St. Barnabas, Los Angeles Aging Advocacy Coalition, LAUSD's Programs for Older Adults, and other wonderful people who are here with us today, who fight throughout the year to improve the quality of life for older adults throughout our city. Let's give them a hand as well. And as we work together to advocate for the senior citizens of our city, we also point out one various additional serious issue, uh, senior fraud. Two years ago, on May 15th, 2013, our great former council member, Bill Rosendahl, created Senior Fraud Awareness Day in the City of Los Angeles. It happened to be on his birthday, uh, May 15th, and, uh, we should wish Bill a happy birthday on this day as well.
Happy birthday, Bill, out in TV land.
I hope he's watching. And today is that day, and we, as a city, continue to keep this tradition alive by illuminating this growing problem. There are events throughout our city today and this week to help educate people on senior fraud. And yesterday, Adrienne Omansky and her actors from the LAUSD's Programs for Older Adults held an event at the Felicia Mayhood Center on Senior Fraud, uh, which is run by Jewish Family Service of Los Angeles. And this is now, uh, an annual event. Senior Fraud Awareness Day is important because, as a percentage of older adults rapidly increases, they're greater targets for fraud and deception. And that's why today, while we celebrate Older Americans Month, we also recognize Senior Fraud Awareness Day in the City of Los Angeles. And now I'd like to ask Adrienne Omansky to speak. Adrienne is one of the incredible teachers of LAUSD's Programs for Older Adults and works tirelessly to educate on this vital issue.
Thank you, Councilmember Carrasca. It was the idea of your district director, John Darnell, to bring our program, Stop Senior Scam Acting Program, to other council districts. We have gone to eight. Thank you, council members. You made it possible by providing us with the transportation. These are some of the comments of your constituents who have seen our program. Oasis Baldwin Hills.
I've been contacted by the IRS.
Oasis Westside Pavilion.
My husband was a victim of the mystery shopper.
One Generation.
The visual program makes it easier to understand.
St. John of God.
I was scared to tell my daughter.
Griffith Park.
I was a victim of, hey, you hit my car. I paid out $500.
Veterans Home.
Even a 99-year-old veteran can get scammed.
Our goal is to continue our road trip, recruit new actors, and pass on the information. Together...
We can stop senior scams.
And now, on behalf of the City of Los Angeles, I'd like to present Adrienne and her group a certificate recognizing Senior Fraud Awareness Day.
Thank you very much. I just, my group is here, some of my group is here, so I wanted them to stand. Come on. Come on.
I will take a photograph behind the chambers of everybody, too.
Thank you so much.
And also, I'd like to, uh, present, uh, our own Department of Aging with a certificate for Older Americans Month.
Give James a big hand. He's one of the great ones. All the staff at the Office of Aging.
Thank you so much, colleagues.
Thank you, Mr. Carrasca. Very good. Stephanie Vending, please rise. Greater Griffin Park Community Adult Center. Stand up, Stephanie. Get a hand. Big Stephanie. Thank you, Stephanie. Call on the President of the City Council, Herb Wesson, for a very, very special presentation.
Will you bring up Belman, the crew? I just want you.
Mr. President, you are definitely excused, and we will make space for you. Mr. Labange, you and I met back in the mid to late 80s, members at a time when we had so many unsupervised youth running around the city right after school with literally nothing to do. There were very few positive places for them to go, where they could, uh, learn, have fun, interact with other children, and, uh, stay out of trouble. Our great mayor, that everybody remembers, Tom Bradley, decided, yeah, okay, let's give Mayor Bradley a round of applause. Recognized that this was a problem, and he wanted the city to do its part in trying to combat the, uh, this problem that seemed to be engulfing areas of high poverty and high crime. So he and a group of individuals created LA's Best. And LA's Best is a program for children that specializes in after-school education, enrichment, and recreational programs. When, uh, this organization was started, 10 schools were selected, where they had hoped that LA's Best would be able to go in and help these 10 schools. Mr. President, that was back in 1988. Today, they service over 195 elementary schools in the City of Los Angeles. Let's give them a round of applause for that. They serve over 25,000 children each day, and they have a summer program that where they work with anywhere between 7,000 to 8,000 children on a given time. Over the years, because of LA's Best and Mayor Bradley's vision, that they have touched over 362,000 children, touched the lives of over 362,000 children. And I wanted to do something special today by bringing LA's Best in, letting them know how we feel about them, but more importantly, to introduce to you their new president and CEO, Eric Gerner, who, I've, give Eric a round of applause. I have had a couple of opportunities, uh, to sit down and talk with him, with my good friend, Belma, who's high... Belma, come on, come on. Yeah, Belma said he's the guy that stands in the corner. But no, uh, Belma brought the two of us together, and we're gonna sit down and we're gonna talk about the mission and the vision for LA's Best. And we spent 35 minutes talking about unsung heroes and singing groups from the 60s and the 70s. And we had the time of our life. But we even had more fun when we began to talk about the mission of LA's Best. So at this time, I'd like to present to you, for a few words, a man that we'll be working with very closely. He's already been on the job for, uh, three months. But ladies and gentlemen, let's give the president and CEO of LA Best a LA's round of applause and a LA welcome.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. And thank you, council. And I want to especially thank my team who's here behind me. I didn't know that they would actually, literally, have my back for this presentation. And I so appreciate it. I'm so much more comfortable with them behind me like that. Uh, this is actually a homecoming for me. I worked at LA's Best over 15 years ago. And, um, I've been very blessed and honored to be able to come back now to this role of president and CEO, um, so many years later. My first day on the job at LA's Best happened to coincide with the screening of the very wonderful documentary that was made about Mayor Bradley, up in the Tom Bradley Room, um, of this building. I can't think of a more fitting symbolic moment for my first day on the job. Of course, many of you know I'm succeeding a legend, the founding president and CEO, Carla Sanger. And I'm proud to say that Carla has been my mentor and partner for the last 17 years, as we work to bring the mission and values of LA's Best, um, across the country, to the work that I was doing nationally in New York City with after-school programs there. But I believe that she would agree that, in a greater sense, I'm one steward of a small part of the legacy of Mayor Bradley. Upon leaving office, he told Los Angeles Times that he was proudest of three accomplishments in his 20-year tenure as mayor of this city. Number one, he brought the Olympic Games to Los Angeles in 1984. Number two, he created the citywide metro system. And number three, establishing LA's Best. And now I pause dramatically.
...million dollars of downtown tax revenue over the next two decades to lay the foundation for America's largest after-school education and childcare program. I want elementary school students throughout Los Angeles to have the chance to learn at school until their parents finish work. I want these kids to be tutored by bright high school and college students to experience positive alternatives to drugs and gangs, to participate in drama and athletics, to complete their homework and reinforce good learning habits at a young age, to be counseled by parents, community workers, and older students to resist destructive pressures from their peers. I want working parents to feel secure that their children are involved in meaningful after-school activities. The City of Los Angeles has no financial or legal responsibility for our schools. But I want you to know, I feel a fundamental moral obligation to our children and to their parents.
At LA's Best, we take that moral obligation very seriously. At no cost to parents, from the close of the school day until 6 o'clock, Monday through Friday, LA's Best helps kids find success in school. But more than that, to discover and explore their interests and passions, to find the spark of engagement and motivation that will light their way to success throughout their lives. We support children's academic achievement by providing help with homework and by weaving intellectual rigor into everything we do. But in addition, we provide a wide array of enrichment, including digital learning, to help kids become full digital citizens, so they can create technology and not just consume it. We create performing and visual arts education and experiences. We promote health and fitness through sports and other activities like our native gardens and our fabulous Best Fit programs. And we offer enrichments that help children develop positive values and communication skills that enable them to resolve their conflicts and see themselves as change-makers in their communities. In addition, LA's Best helps children and families expand their horizons and get out of their neighborhoods through field trips and citywide events. Include, I like field trips, too. Including our Performing Arts Showcase, held annually at UCLA's Royce Hall, the Community Jam for Peace, an annual dance and drill team showcase, which takes place this Saturday and last Saturday at Cal State LA, a science fair co-designed by NASA JPL, and a year-round calendar of seasonal athletic competitions in flag football, basketball, softball, and soccer. To top it off, every child in LA's Best receives a free nutritious supper every day. Each day during the after-school hours, more than 25,000 children in... more than twenty-five thousand children in need rely upon LA's Best. On average, ninety percent qualify for free and reduced lunch. And our sites are located in the most economically distressed neighborhoods of our city. We believe our success is your success. Our program is literally your program. Because ultimately, our kids and families and neighborhoods are your kids and families and neighborhoods. I've already met with many of you individually and I look forward to ways to work, finding ways to work together for the good of our communities we both serve. And that offer, that offer of partnership is genuine and ongoing. I want to thank you for your steadfast support over the years. We're a lean operation and we're truly grateful for the support of the whole city, including the mayor's office and the city council. With your support both individually and collectively, we will do our best to continue to grow and expand the supports we give to young people across the city. So, one thing I've learned in just three months on this, in this job, is that you all expect and ask from someone in my position. So, here it is. Here's how you can help me help kids. LA's Best leverages the investment you make as a city to bring in much-needed additional dollars from the state and federal governments as well as the private sector. And we are currently in a serious economic squeeze. In the coming, in the coming years, we have increased costs, including the state law to provide twenty-four hours of sick time to part-time employees, a probable cost of living adjustment from the school district. I'm in support of these adjustments. We need to make them for, for our workforce to be healthy and strong. However, they do cost. The state funds that we receive under Prop forty-nine, the After School Education and Safety Program, have not increased since it began in two thousand and six. With increased costs and over seventeen percent inflation in that time period, we are struggling to simply maintain and sustain the program. The state funds us and other programs at the rate of seven dollars and fifty cents per student per day. While we're incredibly grateful for these funds and the importance the state has placed on high-quality after-school programs, that amount doesn't come close to fully funding a quality after-school program. Recent Wallace Foundation study showed that a high-quality program actually costs about twenty-one dollars a day. Here's the part where you can help. The state legislature is currently considering raising the rate per student per day by just one dollar. We think it's a modest request and we think it's possible, given the new robust status of Prop ninety-eight funds, as Governor Brown has recently highlighted, which is where Prop forty-nine funds come from. So, if you have a friend in the Assembly or the State Senate, I'd like to ask you to help LA's Best and other after-school programs across this city and across the state by asking them to influence their colleagues on the Budget Committee to pass this increase in funds. It's one dollar per child, per day. It's a worthwhile and modest gesture. We are grateful for the funds the city has invested in LA's Best. And I'm proud to tell you that every dollar the city has invested has been leveraged to bring an additional six dollars into this city from federal, state, and private funds into this program and into the lives of children and families with the highest needs and fewest resources. On top of that, national research has shown that every dollar invested in after-school saves up to nine dollars in public funds, savings from improved attendance and graduation rates, increased, improved health outcomes, and decreased juvenile crime. From a dollars and cents perspective, the return on investment is tremendous. From a human's perspective, from a child's point of view, I assure you that the benefit to the city is priceless. Thank you very much for your time.
I wanna stand next to you. We're same height. You're probably right.
I neglected to introduce one of the most important people in this entire effort, and I'm truly sorry for neglecting to do that. And that is our chief operating officer from Los Angeles Unified School District Operations Office of LA's Best, Debbie Lockston. And that's beyond the bell.
Let's look at Sherry first. Belma, how come you're not in a photo?
Hold on for just a second, Mr. Labons. Just waiting for our guests to take their final picture. Mr. Labons, go ahead.
Mr. President, uh, thank you. Madam President, Mr. Wesson, thank you for bringing this distinguished group in before you all break up right there, Eric. It was very ironic on that video, Mr. Bradley was standing right up there at the president's making the announcement there. If you look at the back of the video, it's that tile that is there. It's that root that Mayor Bradley put in this program, late, great Mayor Tom Bradley and the great Carla Sanger. You got big shoes to fill and you're gonna fill them. So, just call on our members, 'cause like Ms. Martinez, who's been a champion for children, a member of the Board of Education, now a great member of City Council. Many of us have the opportunity, Mr. Sadio, others and others, to help and serve. Thank you, LA's Best. You're all wonderful people.
Very well said, Mr. Labons. Thank you very much. And thank you to our friends at LA's Best. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, do you wish to recess the regular and begin the special meeting?
Uh, yes.
Blue Benfil, Bonnebuscano, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weza, Carrasco, Correa, Labos, Martinez, Ofero, Parks, Price, Wesson, eleven members present in a corner, Madam President. Madam President, there's a request to continue items eight through ten to Wednesday, May twentieth.
Without objections, those items are continued.
Madam President, do you wish to adjourn the, the special and return back to the regular meeting?
Yes, we should return to the regular meeting and we can go to item four.
Item four, call special for cards.
First speaker, Mr. Herman, item four. Are you here?
Ms. Nury from the Valley, I'm speaking on item number four, recording resolutions to relative removing various properties from the rent escrow account. Hey, people from the Bell Program, congratulations, but let me stay on topic. Recording from the accompanying resolutions removing the following properties from REAP in CD one, CD nine, which is Mr. Price, who's not in his seat. Why doesn't people sit in their seats and listen to us?
He is not talking about this item.
Okay, Dion, I'm gonna wrap this up in one minute. I got twenty-eight seconds, Dion, please, please. I'm just a little, why, want a chance?
Mr. Herman, this is your second warning. Please stay on the subject.
Okay, I'm being warned again about the rent escrow account. It's a good job that the city holds accountable the nasty criminal landlords like the city of Los Angeles who don't provide us housing, sustainable housings, you bunch of rats. Down to three seconds, have it, Dion.
Next speaker, Michael Hunt.
Yes, yes, let's talk about the rent escrow. I gotta say, Arreya Hunt, Michael Hunt, and Queen Thatcher. A ten percent load-in fee for City Hall. The four hundred and ninety-eight million dollars is due today. Please get it caught up to in a ten percent escrow.
He, he is not talking about this item.
Next speaker, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org or at Jay Walsh Confidential or at Two Urban Girls. And, uh, you're doing a very good job on rent. If you do a good job, I'm the first one to say you're good. I'm not. Twenty-five years at LAUSD, working with these people over here. And, uh, okay, these properties. I have said it again and I will say it again and again. Why are these properties here? The landlords are no longer getting the rent. The rent is going to the city. Why? Because the tenants have complained to the landlord about code violations and the landlord has done nothing at Workman Street, at Fifty-Sixth Street. And thanks to people like Jackie Goldberg, who instituted this system, the landlord is being punished. This is what we want to see, along with an increase in rent control. And what we want to see here is until the landlord here at North Workman Street, twenty-six seventy, repairs the code violations in his property for the renters or at seven thirty-nine West Fifty-Sixth Street, the landlord does not get the rent. In other cities here, West Hollywood, all these cities, they don't have a program like this. You are doing an excellent job on this. I know it drives you crazy when I pat you on the back, but I have to pat you on the back as a land, as a renter here since nineteen seventy-six. You are doing an excellent job on REAP. HollywoodHighlands.org or check us out at Two Urban Girls.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. That's, um, there are no more cards on this item. No speakers on the queue. Open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That item passes. Next item.
Item six, call special for cards.
First speaker, Antonia Ramirez.
Good morning. This is a matter of principle. Before the motion by Mike Bonin and Paul Corretts authorizing the LA Department of Transportation to extend the West Side Mobility Plan contract through June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, stop the massive overcrowding in all transportation vehicles, stop the horrendous Latino chango gang-banging infestation and crimes that both these wetbacks and gang-bangers provoke, I said provoke, which are violence, graffiti, litter, harassment, theft, vandalism, drug sales, drinking, liquor, foul stench, urination, defecation.
She is not on topic.
Talking, uh, excuse me, say what?
You're not on the topic, item number six?
Well, that is the topic because they're forming something in the contract and we want this to be stipulated on the contract before it goes through, that these are hidden dangers that they're not exposing. And that's the bulk of the problem that we have with the Department of Transportation, that they are not providing safety for the passengers. Is that good enough, attorney? 'Cause you're not, you're not protecting us. We're protecting ourselves. That's why we come here. We're in a, we're in a bit of a pickle here, you know what I mean? With all these crimes, I mean, come on, the LAPD isn't answering. You're not responding.
This is regarding the West Side Mobility Plan?
I mean, I'm moving and I'm telling you, I'm moving 'cause I've gotta bring these crimes up here with all force and all movement. So, I, I tell you, it's, it's gotta stop. And do me a favor, Lysol and bleach the place, please, 'cause it's a stench in there. And all mobility, disinfect, fumigate, and disinfect, please. Lysol, 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 Chihuahua, thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Next speaker, Herman. Mr. Herman.
Nury from the Valley, I'm talking about item number four, motion, oh, sorry, six. Bonin and Corretts, relative to authorizing the Los Angeles Department of Transportation, extend the West Side Mobility Plan. What? Contract? Hey, dude, you're my camera. June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, recommendation for console subject to the approval of Eric Garcetti for the mayor, for the record. Authorize Los Angeles Department of Transportation to extend the West Side Mobility on the White Plan Contract, number one-one-seven-four-three-nine through June tenth, two thousand and sixteen, with no increase in funding to continue the preparation of an environmental impact report. Really, Dion? That will save both the coastal transportation corridor specific plan and the West Los Angeles transportation improvement, Michigan specific, ay, plan, go back to the subject. So, what, kids, what they're trying to say here as the city attorney interrupted the fine lady speaker is that we're spending lots of money for transportation improvements, but yet the trains and the bus systems smell like shit. Why can't we clean up our trains and buses for all the commuters? And by the way, you did promise us that the speed rail wouldn't go over the budget. Now, it's eighty dollars versus the fifty dollars for a ticket for a speed train to San Francisco, Mr. Brown. But anyways, the finish, let me conclude. Improvements for the mitigation specific plan update, Santa Matt, the West Side Mobility Plan.
Next speaker, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is a little complex. What is happening here is they have not completed the West Mobility Plan Environmental Impact Report on time. They did a bad job. Now they're getting an extension of time, apparently at no cost. Well, why has it slowed down? Why haven't, why are they coming back to redo the Environmental Impact Report? Because of our victory, uh, in, uh, in, uh, Los An- in Hollywood on the twin skyscraper towers, chucking out that environmental report. Because of that, they now are going through all the environmental reports that haven't been released to rewrite them. So, not only did we stop a twin skyscraper project downtown, now The Times isn't gonna tell you this, but we have slowed down all of them. And their answer always in the Mobility Plan is build more rail and less buses. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Spindler, I think this is you, also known as Adolf Hitler?
Yeah, you.
Item six.
Thank you, Adolf Hitler, present. But we have to address the chair, the first woman chair. So, I'm gonna go into Nury mode. It's called Nury mode.
On item number six, the Department of Transportation to extend the West Side Mobility Plan contract, I gotta have a new environmental impact report because we know that the bribes that we gave are no longer valid after John Walsh kicked our asses in the city. So, we have to, we have to do an increase in funding because the environmental impact report is invalid because we don't have any more judges on the take. They're not gonna, they're not gonna take the bribe money. So, you have to go through the whole damn thing all over again. So, the coastal transportation people, the West Los Angeles people, and all these crazy homeowners actually want these things done up the code. You guys, you gotta stop all this madness and start paying off more judges and inspectors. It's costing too much money. The bribes are cheaper.
She's not talking about the Mobility Plan.
You have to, in, in a mitigation specific plan update, you have to include the payoffs. But you don't call them payoffs, you call them vacation time. So, the coastal transportation corridor is the most important thing. You gotta have kids that go to the beach after they get done riding the broken train to nowhere. They have to get to the beach. So, please, please, no more increases in funding. Just give it to the people and then the lawsuits will happen and they'll overturn it and there'll never be a train or a project again in LA. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, there are no more cards on this item. Please open the row, close the row, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
This item passes. Madam Clerk, this item, item seven.
Item seven, call special for cards.
First speaker, Antonia Ramirez. Item number seven.
Sorry, that went rather quickly. Thank you very much. Forgive me. Number seven, this is a matter of principle. Thank you very much. Council members Mitchell Englander and Joe Buscano, will these street events in Granada Hills be safe and free from chango Latino gang-bangers and wetbacks? And will the event help feed or edify our- help feed and edify our wonderful courageous military veterans and pilots? And I reserve my time, thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker is John Walsh.
John Walsh at HollywoodHighlands.org, or J. Walsh Confidential, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This says, funding for the annual street fair event, that's what it says, but then you read the fine print, and it is not for that, and let me quote it, and if I'm wrong, correct me, correct me if I'm wrong, you correct me when I'm wrong, and this is what it says here, the $15,000 for any aspect of the operations of the Granada Hill Chamber of Commerce, that is what it is. It's a $15,000 check to the white Granada Hills. Now, this is an all-white jury, you got Uncle Tom's up here, but I speak to every black and every Hispanic up here, $15,000 to an all-white Granada Hills Chamber of Commerce, that's what this is, $15,000. And if I'm wrong, destroy my credibility. Did I read exactly what it says there? I did. Shame on you, white racists.
Next Speaker, Mr. Spindler, also known as Adolf Hitler.
Yes, going as Adolf Hitler today, speaking before the Socialist Council of the People's Party. Oh, look at this, oh, we're gonna give $15,000 away to the Sunshine Canyon Landfill Community Amities Trust Fund. Yes, they're so thankful for that landfill, and to thank everybody for it, $15,000 of money to use for anything you want. What should we be using this money for? So does. We should be using it for cigarettes and tobacco products, we should also have them go to their neighborhood 7-Eleven, which is item number one today, and buy lots of liquor and hot dogs, three for $2. $15,000 can go a long way. Now, of course, on this item, we're not going to disclose any conflicts of interest, such as pending approval projects for subdivisions, we're not gonna do that, and, no, we're gonna do this for a celebration, because the $15,000 is not to incur any political favor from anybody, of course not, like when they're taking the septic tanks away from everybody in that council district, the $15,000 is only for a party, it's not, it's not, it's not to curry political influence and favors and corruption and bribery, no, of course not, because that city doesn't do that. $15,000 for any aspect, no controls, just $15,000 to do whatever you want in the name of some sort of civilization, some sort of thing, so, that's what it is, people, you can't vote them out, you wanna do things in the city, money, 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 and you gotta pay off the building inspectors, too, so it's very expensive to build in this city. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, there are no more cards on this item. Open the roll, please sit down, Mr. Herman. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
This item passes.
Madam President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Thank you, our first speaker is Jose Andrade.
My name is Jose Andrade, I am here to state my complete opposition to the proposal to raise the minimum wage to $15 plus change. Your thinking on this matter leaves much to the mentality of let the good times roll, condemn the harmful consequences. You will have tampered in a very real way with the dynamics of our local economy, it was you collectively who took the city to the brink of insolvency and bankruptcy. You still need to cut the retirement benefits by another 25%. Not long ago, you gave away 25, you gave away a 25% pay increase to thousands upon thousands of city employees. Collectively, you have an insatiable appetite to look good and benevolent by pleasing people, no matter the cost or harm to our business, industry, and commerce, and eventually very people it was meant to help. I'm retired and live on a fixed income, but will all your constituents live? Thank you.
Mr. Spindler.
Another great meeting, thank you, we have successfully again shut down operations here in Corruption City Hall. Item one was taken off, every single item of the special meeting was deferred, every single item, I put a card on but two, were all deferred. Why? Because the rainstorm can't keep out the people, the thunder can't keep out the people, and the people want to know where that $4 billion is going to, because they know it's not going to repair the streets, the broken water mains, the broken sidewalks, and the corruption. So they want to know where the $4 billion is going to in that budget, but you're gonna defer all those items, we're gonna keep coming back, you're gonna find out, the $4 billion question is gonna be answered the same way that Mr. Tanaka got himself answered yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Next Speaker, Antonia Ramirez.
Madam Clerk, could you pass this to each and every single one of our council members? This is a matter of principle. I've deduced that chronic homelessness are for the following reasons, and the following individuals, US military veterans, drug dealers, junkies, pimps, and victims of crime, and those of us who are homeless by design, i.e., gang stalkings, and victims of us unscrupulous and despicable attorneys, or legal hacks and scumbags, and as a homeless victim of gang stalking crimes, and I am homeless by design, because I had a home, I am subjected to theft, vandalism, physical attacks, abuses of all kinds, night and day. So ladies and gentlemen, as I was sleeping in Little Tokyo, homeless, I get shopping carts, I bought this for $30 at Ralph's, I get these gang-banging chango Latino wetbacks who unscrew every one of the bars, unscrew my shopping carts that I just bought, and the tires, okay, this is what I'm subjected to every single day.
Thank you, ma'am. The next speaker, John Walsh.
Next Tuesday, May 19, is an election, you must vote, you must vote for David Rue, if you live in that council manic district, you must vote for David Rue, R-Y-U, we need an Asian on this board, it is a racist, non-Asian board, R-Y-U, check your ballot, sample ballot now, or if you have an absentee ballot, vote now. Vote for, if you are in the district for LAUSD, that contains Bennett Kaiser, vote for Bennett Kaiser against his opposition. If you are in the district where Scott Schmerelson is, the LAUSD seat, vote for Schmerelson, vote for Schmerelson, Rue, and Kaiser, those are the people to vote for. Check it out on my website, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you, sir. Next Speaker, Mr. Herman.
Students in the back, this is a lesson in freedom of speech, freedom of expression, your First Amendment right. As in the detail of this general public comment, I will refrain from using offensive language, because there is a child in her, I will say it's F up that you don't allow us to be heard on specific items, little Nury from the Valley with the hourglass body, you should listen to the censorship of what we have to say. Labange, relax, get an X-lac, relax, because this is general public comment, and like all politicians, learn to accept criticism. Federal ruling, Judge Ferguson, Zuma Dog versus LA, Matt Dow versus LA, and you got screwed for a few million dollars of the taxpayers. So sit down, be quiet, and take our cards, and not dump them in the trash, because Kenny and I, Ms. Nury, Kenny and I have lots of fun drawing on our cards.
Thank you, Mr. Herman. Next Speaker, Michael Hunt.
Thank you, Michael Hunt, he did hit on something that was very important, Dean Ferguson's ruling about the First Amendment. Stop breaking the law. Mike Fur, you owe me, you told my Lexus, a hybrid, the wrong way, please give me the check, as you did wrong, and as the city of Los Angeles did wrong. It was retaliation for the 215, retaliation for the 215. You guys stopped me about 30 times after you, after I received, me and my attorney received $215,000, that's retaliation. Please write another check for $215,000 immediately, for retaliation, that's against the law. Araya Stell Hunt, Michael Hunt, property owners.
Thank you, sir. Next Speaker, Eric Previn.
Thank you, it's Eric Previn, a resident from Council District 2, thank you for having me back. I would like to also thank Mr. Wesson for that very moving performance this morning. The children, we all appreciate that, I certainly did, and I would like to raise one small issue about the items today, nine and 10, that were continued. It's unclear, does this board or city council provide an opportunity to address items that have been continued, Mr. O'Connell? Yes? No question response from the city attorney about a matter like that? Okay, well, fair enough. It's my feeling that the city council needs to bend over a teeny bit and work harder at providing an open forum whereby the public can redress grievances in an ordinary fashion, just like other meetings in town and throughout the state of California. So I don't know exactly how we can arrange that, I would be happy to meet with Justin, who seems to have some sort of authority over the meeting, and anything like that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes general public comment. Madam Clerk, what's before us?
Madam President, council has motions for post and referred.
Posted and referred.
That clears the desk.
Thank you very much. Members, any announcements? Mr. Labange?
Wonderful evening at 6 o'clock last night at the Griffith Observatory, 80th anniversary, and a young man from Eagle Rock was there, where he was treated with a new book on the observatory, it was his birthday today, and it was a great day to be at the observatory. Remember all, members, you're welcome to coordinate with the observatory to bring your schools there. Happy birthday, Griffith Observatory.
Mr. Labange, anyone else? Please rise for adjourned motions. Audience as well, please rise.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, it's with great sadness that I announce that Dolores Lydia Kirk from Silmar, referred to by everyone as Dolly, has passed. She grew up in Los Angeles, attended San Fernando High School, where she left after the 11th grade to marry the love of her life, Robert Kirk, after he returned from Korea. They were married on April 18, 1953, and were together until the day she left us for 62 years. They settled down in Silmar, where they raised their six children. Growing up, Dolly was involved with the Cub Scouts and served as a den mother, her passion was her marriage and her family and the community. The Kirks, some of you may know, were very, very involved with the Civil Independent Baseball League, and Dolly did so much for that league, as well as for the rest of the community. They really had a leave it to Beaver family, and she really enjoyed that. Dinner was always on the table every evening, the children took turns washing dishes, and they made sure to do all their chores and their homework. Dolly was fortunate enough to have been a stay-at-home parent while she was able to keep her children and those of the community very busy. She loved seeing her grandchildren excel in the classroom, as well as the athletic field. She attended many football, baseball, and softball games. She is part of the community in Silmar, she passed this past Sunday on Mother's Day, surrounded by her family. Dolly was laid to rest yesterday on May 14, 2014, at the San Fernando Mission. She is survived by her husband, Robert, of 62 years, her six children, Joe, Robert, Kenny, Stephen, Lorena, and Randy, and 15 grandchildren and seven great-grandchildren. Dolly will truly be missed, and may she rest in peace.
Yeah, members, I think you should remember BB King at the Blues, beautiful man that he was, once in a different role here at City Hall, was able to greet him and give him a great honor as a monumental musician, when you think he was born in Mississippi, and how he transformed in the Blues, and I think as I read the recounts, that it was a show at the Fillmore, where he played with Bill Graham, was the promoter, and it transformed him from just the Blues to being world-renowned, and his famous hit, The Thrill Is Gone, has helped, his music lasts forever and ever. Let's remember the great BB King.
Labange, anyone else? Our meeting is adjourned, have a good weekend, be safe out there, thank you very much.